Okay. I'd like to call the order. The Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021. On the agenda today is old business, and that is the public hearing for zoning amendment application 0320-1 submitted by Ryland. That again is being tabled as it has for the last few months. So we will go on to new business. And first on the agenda for new business is a work session for possible zoning text amendments related to the RCD, which is a residential conservation development district, and micro-distillery. I think we've kind of on a holding pattern with the RCD text amendments right now? Or do we want to continue?
Well, I guess the chairman, you know, just to update the board, you know, and follow up to the email that we sent later earlier this month. Hi, Ron, Andy, and myself, Matt, Wes, Stephanie, and Abby, we discussed the amendments that we talked about at our February meeting and the direction that the board was looking at going. They understood as far as what we wanted to do with the design criteria and which ones we wanted to incorporate as required versus desirable. We also discussed changing the review process and potentially eliminating the yield plan as part of that review process. One thing that they suggested is we maybe discuss a little bit further on that, the minimum open space requirement. Do we want to go with what we talked about briefly last month? A minimum 40%? Is that too high? You know, maybe we could discuss that a little bit more tonight. So we're clear on what we want to do. So the way that the zoning district is currently written, a developer could come in with a 20-acre piece of land and set aside as little as 10% of that as open space. And they would still, under the current zoning, be afforded a small density increase of 2%. What we talked about last month was, you know, eliminating that density bonus and saying, you know, we shall at least come in with 20 acres. And of that 20 acres, we want to see 40% of that set aside as permanent open space. And then you develop out the rest of the land with lots that meet the design criteria and overall the requirements in the RCD. So one thing that we looked at early on in like December and January when we first started reviewing the RCDs that were already approved by the township was we looked at how much open space they put in their projects. And as we know, all of them had to use 40%. So if you have that spreadsheet that we had put together initially. And then if you looked at Concord Ridge and Orchard Springs, and I think those two were probably the most favorable of all the ones that we reviewed. Those developments had, were reaching almost 50% open space. I know we've talked a lot about the most recently approved one, where they did just meet the 40% open space requirement. Overall, some of the open space was impacted in that with the detention basins. And as you know, we're going to make that very clear in this amendment that that is not going to be counted as open space moving forward. So I think, you know, if that development, specifically Eagle Point, were to be submitted the same way it would be today, they wouldn't meet that 40% open space. They're probably close to 35%. And that would probably decrease their density a little bit on that project.
So what's not included?
Where pro, they would not be allowed in any area that would quickly cleared for any kind of infrastructure, like stormwater or utilities, those kind of things. The open space would basically have to be undisturbed. So they couldn't use that for any kind of infrastructure used for the developer. And the areas that, the way the zoning is written, that we're trying to protect include like woodlands, riparian areas, wetlands. Those are the kind of features, steep slopes, things of that nature that we want to see preserved and staying in those open space areas. So I guess my question will be, do we want to go to 40? Do we want to say 30?
20 acres, 30%, that's 6 acres. 40% would be 8 acres. Take away all the driveways, the streets, setbacks. I'd be okay with 30.
I sort of agree. 40 seems awful high. That's almost half the land. 30 is probably more realistic.
Yeah, that was my thought process, Rich, was that, you know, when you start pushing to 40, you start, especially on a smaller project, you know, you really start to, it becomes cumbersome, you know? And then we start taking away, and in the same breath, we're also taking away some of the, you know, some of their ability to use certain parts as open space, like retention basins or right-of-ways and things of that nature. You know, and that even limits it more. So it can take a small project and pretty much, it can disincentivize the developer from considering an RCD, which I don't think we want to do. You know, I don't think we want to do that. So my thought process was maybe we take it in two different directions in that regard. We take it like it's a lot, because there aren't that many big opportunities, there aren't that many big project opportunities left in the township, you know, for large blocks of land. I mean, you know, 50, 60, 100-acre projects just aren't out there anymore. It's going to be small stuff, you know, it's going to be somebody trying to combine a couple of small lots together to scrape, you know, 20 acres together, 25 acres. So, you know, maybe we look at the smaller, at a smaller project with a smaller percentage requirement. And a bigger project, anything over a certain number of acres, maybe then we jump it to 40% because they've got more land that they can, they could be, that's more real, that's something that I think is realistic. They've got more land to deal with. They can be more, we can be more forgiving on a 50-acre project, say, than a 20-acre project. You know, I mean, at 20 acres, you hold it 40%. Like you said, you're talking almost half the development is going to go to open space. I mean, that's going to mean that you're going to disincentivize. Maybe if we drop, if it's under, say, 25 acres. We should have a hard line though. We should have a, like, if it's less than 25 acres, then we should say maybe it's a 30% open space requirement. If it's 30, if it's 25 acres or 26 acres or more, or whatever, then we go to, you know, 40%. Or something like, I think that would be a fair way to address that.
You could even have a sliding scale. It's at 20 acres to 50 acres is maybe a little bit more. And then over 50 is the highest.
Right.
Could do that. That'd be...
See, my thought process is there just, I mean, there aren't that, I mean, there aren't that many big project, you know, like large acreage projects left in the town. I mean, there just aren't that many left. Unless somebody gets real creative and is able to combine, you know, a couple of decent-sized parcels together. And you know what that's like. I mean, if somebody knows they're in a desirable spot, they're going to hold out. And that's going to be real difficult from a negotiation standpoint if they know they're sitting on a big chunk of land that would be critical for somebody to do an RCD. You know, they're going to stick it to whoever's trying to buy it, you know, so. But that is what it is. I mean, it's not our problem. But we want to try to incentivize it and not disincentivize it. So, do you'd say 20 acres? Anything less than 20? Well, it's got to be at least 20 acres.
It's got to be at least 20.
It's got to be at least 20. So if you want to say 25, we go 25%, and then, you know, maybe, and then, you know, from 25 to 26 to...
40, maybe.
Go to, and you can go to 40? I mean, is that realistic? What was Lily? What was Lily? Lily Farms?
Lily Farms?
How many acres total?
They were about 24 acres.
It's only 20, yeah, 24.61.
With 42% open space. And that was R4, so that went down to half-acre lots.
Before we go, any other discussion, I'd like to acknowledge that Frank Schindler is on the phone. Frank? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my comment to the topic here is looking at it in combination with the density bonus. I can't think of the open space without considering the density bonus at the same time. So the code calls for, I believe, 8%, like a 30%, 8% density increase. So I'm having trouble understanding how a developer and/or design on a sliding scale would work, or how that is done. Whereas when we talk about a 30, or 40, or a 20%, shouldn't we talk about how it's tied to the density increase? Is that going to vary, or is that going to follow the way we have it already prescribed?
Isn't the density increase based upon the...
Open space.
Well, no, no.
Well, it was based on twofold. The open space and the number of lots on the yield plan.
On the yield plan.
So, but correct me if I'm wrong. It seems like if we were going to get rid of the yield plan, that that, in effect, is going to get rid of these density bonuses.
We're not going to have the density bonus anymore. We're not going to have the density bonus anymore.
So what is it, when we say 30% open space, what are we saying about the density then? Is it's up to the design, and then on the merits of the design?
Right. So the density is somewhat regulated based on the ability of the designer to come up with lots that conform to, you know, .25 acres or .5, depending on what area the township.
Right, right.
Right. Right now, we haven't, you know, that is something that the township could discuss. In addition to this is, do we want to give them a flat, you know, overall density for the project? So, and some codes do that. They say, you know, minimum 30% open space, but also, by the way, your project cannot exceed, you know, .5 dwelling units per acre.
That's what I...
Calculated on gross acreage requirement.
Thank you, Heather. That's what I was trying to say, is shouldn't they be tied, when we talk about 30%, with a X density? Or X lot size, or what have you?
So if we went back and reviewed the other projects in the table that we provided here, you'll see that I did calculate the RCD plan density. So like Concord Ridge, when you looked at the total number of units divided by the gross acreage of the project, their overall density was .71 dwelling units per acre. But then, and those are half-acre lots. So if you look, and then Lily Farms, same thing, half-acre lots. They were about, their density was just less than one dwelling unit per acre. But then when you look at the developments that were done with quarter-acre lots, obviously their density is going to be somewhat higher. Like Orchard Springs was at 1.24 dwelling units per acre. And they had almost 50% set aside in open space. While in Eagle Point, their density was much higher. Actually, it was 1.58 dwelling units per acre. And I think this really goes down to the fact that those detention areas were counted as the open space during that project. And so, and they barely had over 40% open space. So, you know, in the way that the text is written, you know, we have minimum lot sizes, but we also allow frontage requirements and lot width to fluctuate. So you could have a developer that comes in and gives you 90-foot wide lots because they want to put a 70-foot wide home on there with 10-foot side yards. But then the next day, you begin a different project where someone's going to come in with 60-foot wide lots, 40-foot wide home, and you maintain that 10-foot side yards on each side. And that project is going to be much more dense than the other one just based on the types of homes and the lots and the way they laid the lots out. So I guess if you wanted to have more control on the overall density other than just by regulating the lot size, then you probably would have talked about adding some kind of density, maximum density of the project and get it together. There's a curve ball. Where we could go with just, you know, dictating a minimum, but then how do you do the scale if you're going to talk about? Right, because I liked your idea, Andy, about, you know, a bigger project set aside more open space. But then does that do the opposite? Does then do developers look for smaller projects then? So they don't have to do as much open space? You know, I don't know.
But, you know, in that regard, if we ditch the yield plan, that's not going to be any benefit to go with smaller projects. So yeah, they go less open space, but they're still good. That doesn't guarantee them a bigger density bonus. You know what I'm saying? So there's no, I don't think those, I don't think they're tied together. Because if they go with a smaller project, they're still going to have to put, set aside a chunk of open space. And the density bonus isn't, because there's not, there's not going to be that many lots on a smaller project. The density bonus isn't going to be that great. You know, are they going to pick up a couple of extra, maybe two lots in a 20-acre, 25-acre project versus, you know? So if they want, if they actually want to experience a reasonable density bonus, they would probably be looking to do a bigger project than a smaller project.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they'll have more, because, right? I mean, they'll, my thinking, am I off?
You're right, Andy, because Concord Ridge had seven additional lots to last because it was 100 acres.
Right. Yeah, versus, you know, I mean, if it's a 20-acre project, I mean, how many, what are they going to get? Maybe a lot, maybe two?
Lily Farms got two.
Yeah, two lots. I mean, so what's the incentive there? I mean, it's not like they're going to get, if you get an extra five lots, you're going to be limited anyway. So, you know, I think, I think that, I think the sliding, I think a scaled approach to the density bonus or the open space requirement. The density bonus is, I don't, it's going to follow, you know, the size of the project. You know, if it's going to be a bigger project, there's going to be a little bit more of a density bonus.
And when you say density bonus, you just mean more houses? Like just baked into the plan? Because I mean, right?
Yeah, because I mean, it's just going to, it's, there's going to be more room to play, you know, with that, in that regard, in keeping, you know, keeping the spirit of the RCD and open space and quality open space, not just random open space, but quality open space versus, you know, a smaller project where you're just, you're going to really be limited. I mean, it may be, you know, a smaller project may end up being density neutral. I mean, to be honest with you, I mean, it just might be. Because it just, depending on the lay of the land and the, you know, the attributes like riparian setbacks or wetlands or whatever, it could be, it may have to be a density-neutral project. They may not even see an extra lot out of it to preserve the open space, you know? If it's a smaller project. But if it's a bigger project, if they're able to amass, you know, 50 acres or 75 acres, then they can still give us quality, quality open space and see a little bit of a density bonus. You know, get a couple extra lots, you know, a couple, two or three extra lots, maybe four or five, you know, extra lots on a bigger project. So I think you would push, I think we would be kind of pushing them towards trying to do a bigger project. And I think there's benefit to that for the township. Bigger project's going to enable us to have more open space and, you know?
Yeah.
So I think that allows us to drive some of those other features that we were talking about. When you have a bigger project, there's more lots. You're able to drive some of those, you know, breaking, you know, so many lots with an open lot, you know, having transitions between older or established developments with the newer ones and having a break there, you know, taking away some of those lots that would normally be developed. You know, I think that gives us more, that gives us more of the ability to drive that process and try to get more of those requirements that we're putting together on the checklist side of things. Get them to meet more of that with a bigger project than we do with a smaller project. It's just going to be too diff, I think a smaller project's going to be really difficult for anybody to do that. I mean, you're going to get to a point where the developers are going to say, "I'm just going to build it as an R1." Forget about it. Why should I bother? Why should I try? So...
Well, I like the sliding scale. So if we start out with 20 acres at 30%, and then go to 30 acres, 35%, 40 acres and above, 40%.
What if we say 20% for the real smaller?
30%. 30% for 20 acres.
That's reasonable. You need a certain amount for it to make sense, you know?
Well, you'll find out real fast.
Yeah.
You'll find out real quick if there's, you know, some of those, some projects come in in that level and they don't bother with the RCD, then we'll know that that's not a reasonable...
It's probably reasonable because all the current ones are over 40%.
Right, right.
But did they have a choice, though?
Yeah.
You know, they didn't have a choice, right?
They could have a choice. I mean, they could go down to 10.
Right.
They just chose not to, you know? So, as far as the breaks in the acreages, is there, am I hearing right?
Could be 20 to 29 acres, 30%. 30 to 39 acres, 35%. And 40 and above, 40%.
Did you use a calculator for that? Or did you come up with that on your own?
I just guessed.
I like that. I think that's a good way to go. I think that's a...
I think it's a nice sliding scale. I do. I like it.
That's something that we want to have.
Is there any legal issue with that?
I don't know.
Worth checking into.
Yeah, we can, I can discuss that with legal and see if they've got me.
Seems reasonable, though.
The only thing, you know, I'd be somewhat concerned is how we chose those different tiers, you know? What's the reasoning between picking, you know, those specific acreages?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not getting my arms around it. It seems rather arbitrary. So...
It is. I mean, this whole thing is...
Well, no, no, I'd define it a little bit better. So when you look at the township, I think of the R4, right? Which has got some PUDs and utilities. So utilities is going to drive the density. If utilities were extended further east, it seems to me that's where the potential of RCDs could occur, especially east. Just to the lay of land and whatnot. So again, I'm trying to tie the percentage to, in an R4, the minimum lot size is an acre?
One acre.
One acre, right. So the consequences of just saying 40% on a large tract could result in that one acre becoming a half acre. Is that...
That's what it did.
That's what it did, right, Rich? That's what it did, yeah. If that's what that means, or it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean it goes to a quarter of an acre? Or could it? That's what I'm, that's, I guess what I'm saying is, could that drive it to be more denser than we want?
Well, if an R4 was redone to RCD, they would have to do at least a half acre lot size.
Yeah, R1 would enable a quarter acre. Because R1 is a half.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So that's defined already?
Yeah.
Yes.
So if it was an R, if it's an existing R4 property, then they could only take it down to a half acre. They couldn't take it...
I missed that. I apologize.
We fought that battle.
Okay.
We've already fought that battle.
That's where, that's where my concern was.
Yes, we did. We fought that battle.
Right, and you know, Rich, that is a good point to bring up, you know? And if we're going to see larger developments, they're probably going to be on the east. And definitely it's contingent on bringing utilities out there. And then the smaller projects are probably going to be more, probably the R1s. And then some random, you know, smaller assembled projects, you know, in the R4, so.
So it seems to me, Andy, that the basis would be based upon historical records, data, that showing, you know, basic, you know, how many or what percentage of open space was there on development? So there's, at least there's something that we're drawing from as a rationale for the proposal. So I don't know if that's a legal question. Maybe it is arbitrary and it's based upon a subjective-objective opinion.
But that's a good point, right? Because so if you look at Concord Ridge, they had over 100 acres and they were like at 48%.
Yeah.
Orchard Springs, they would have fallen in your 30 to 39-acre project. And under this proposal that we're talking tonight, would have only required 35% open space, but they went with 49%. So, and like Eagle Point, they were just over the 29 acres that would have required at least a minimum of 30%. So we're fairly in line with what actually came in front of the township. Okay. Did you kind of talk yourself?
Me too.
Yeah, and under that, all of these would have been approved.
You okay with that, Rich? Rich?
Yeah, yes, yes. I talked myself through it.
As long as you got, as long as you're okay with it.
Yeah, thank you. Yes.
Frank, do you have any questions?
I'm very down on it. I know it's a very difficult situation to try to come up with a formula. That's the hardest thing when you look at a development. I would always try to think then, first, which title of the fires or the vulnerable area of the development, what areas are fully, you want to keep sensitive. And you're going to come up with some percentage. And then maybe use that percentage of what kind of merit you're going to give to the urban centers, to development and conservation and development itself. And that's very difficult. So I'm always wrapping my thoughts to almost, can you just sort of, but I always keep in mind, try and come up with a formula when it just doesn't seem to drive. A number just doesn't pop out in the, you know, I came up with a sliding scale. That sounds, maybe the motion jumps just way to do it. But I still got mixed emotions. What's the best way?
I mean, take, take for example what's going on over there on Girdle and 608, you know, with Caldwell's property.
Yeah.
Now, that's going to be, he's not going to get, that's going to be septic. He'll have city water. He'll have water, but they won't have sewer. So...
And that makes you ineligible for a residential conservation...
See, that blows that out of the water. Because he's not going to get sewer there. So that's a whole different, you know, that's a whole different animal.
And that's probably what's going to happen out east.
Yes.
But there's other land that could become available in future years.
Right. But that's a big chunk of property. I mean, that's a lot of acreage right there. It's going to be a big, it's going to be a fairly big, I think, probably, it's probably going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 homes, 70 homes.
I'm guessing in that area.
Yeah, probably pretty close, 60, 70 homes in there. But they're not, but they're going to all have septic. And have a fundamental opposition to that. You know, I really do. Would much rather see sewer than septic. Even with all the advances in technology, I just, to me, septic is not, it's just not environmentally friendly.
I'd go for sewer at my place. I have sewer on both sides. But they won't put it on. Oh, well.
But I think a new, you know, from a new development standpoint, I mean, existing stuff is, it is what it is. But I think on new, we should try to drive utilities to everything we possibly can in that regard. But I realize it was, you know, it's just something you just can't, sometimes you just can't do it.
So are you going to talk about the... So are you going to talk about the sliding scale and legal?
Yes, yep. We'll make sure that gets worked into our amendments. So, and the plan is to have that before our equal meetings. Do you guys have the time to review it? I also thought about reaching out to a couple of the, um,
Developers.
Developers and maybe a couple of engineering firms that do a lot of these projects in the township and, and kind of get some feedback, their initial reaction to
Okay.
what we're maybe doing here and see if they've got any thoughts on it.
Be interesting hearing your feedback, especially as it relates to eliminating the yield plans.
Right. Yeah.
They're probably going to say, it's about time.
Yeah. Okay, good. I think we're, I think we're good on that for tonight.
Okay. I think that was the only open area that we had whenever we talked to legal before. So we'll see how that comes out.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Micro distilleries.
Now we're going to have, now we can have some fun. I room's favorite.
So, Mr. Chairman, as a follow-up from our previous discussion on this, you recall we were approached by an organization that was possibly looking at locating a micro distillery in the township. However, we've limited the growing capacity to no more than the eight thousand gallons. State laws changed now allowing micro distilleries to go up to a hundred thousand gallons per year and still have some kind of retail restaurant component associated with that use. And that was originally the genesis of the township trying to cap that was because we wanted to make sure that we weren't just getting a straight production manufacturing facility, but we wanted that experience type place where our residents can go and, you know, either, whether it be a brewery or a distillery, have that experience. So we went and looked at some, what some other townships and communities and cities have done. And I know most of it you already saw. I did come back with a little bit more of a specific recommendation, um, on maybe some changes that we want, may want to move forward with, including changes to our existing definitions to micro brewery, um, distillery and urban winery. And adding a new definition for brewery, distillery and winery. And those would be, um, very similar uses of the aforementioned where they're exceeding the maximum brewing capacity. And what I was proposing that is that we may allow those brewery, distillery and wineries to be permitted uses in our research and limited industrial districts. So if we, if you got a, a micro brewery, a distillery that became successful, that they could then still stay in capital township and maybe build a new production facility down road or back over industrial district. And then some of the other changes that I was proposing that, that we consider was modifying some of the specific conditions that are currently in section thirteen point three five, because micro breweries, distilleries and urban wineries are currently conditionally permitted uses.
Yeah, I'd like to scratch the urban. Kind of flies in the face of semi-rural, doesn't it?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, and with that, I was proposing that we change the definite, the term, actually, instead of urban winery, calling it a, a micro winery. Right, and then, you know, defining that new term. Right, so then the new, then the, then the new definition, winery, would be an establishment that exceeds that maximum brewing capacity. And I know there was a little bit of discussion before we started, um, about whether or not these, these, these outfits would not be like growing the, the grapes on, on premises like the winery. Then we'd be kind of venturing into this agricultural type use and that would probably be regulated a different way. So. If we got somebody that wanted to do an agricultural winery, say over in our eastern portion of the township in the R four, that I don't believe, they would not follow this if it was truly an agricultural use. So you guys understand that. These are more of the, the commercial. They're not growing any of the, the fruit there.
Yeah, I'm envisioning those uses being primarily in the trial court or between forty-four and where we were talking about the, uh, you know, off the discovery lane and things like that. I think that's where our target audience is for that, that application. So.
Right, within our, you know, our capital district, which runs from Capitol across forty-four, right over to trial, and our BX, which runs along basically trial road. So you could tuck away in an existing shopping center, say over where Drug Mart is, if a space became available, and you might get a small micro brewery in there or something, or um, any of the shopping, you know, the shopping center on trial. But some of the specific changes I was proposing here to, with the conditional use permit requirements was basically kind of near a little bit what like Willoughby was having their code. Basically making sure that they're operating in accordance with state and federal regulations and that they have their current licenses to do their, to operate their business. And then, you know, if we were to ever question or request a copy of their report that they send to, to the Bureau of Alcohol that certifies how much production they, they actually did within a twelve-month period, that we would have the ability to ask for that. And then I think that that would only probably ever come up if there was some major, um, issue with them clearly exceeding that limit and with, if they're exceeding that limit, I think that he would be hearing maybe some impacts from residents or adjacent businesses that about increased truck traffic possibly or, or something like that.
Something would have to set it off.
Yeah, right, yeah. I don't think that we'd, we would definitely not be asking for that. Um, and then also, I was suggesting that we do not limit, or that we do not permit any kind of outdoor storage of any other brewing equipment. That's all in the building and then obviously not allow any kind of odorous smells that might constitute a kind of public nuisance. Oh, and then the most important thing is how we do, um, as, under the, uh, micro distillery, changing the, um, capacity. So we had the eight thousand gallons, um, with my research and then discussing it a little bit more with this, um, potential user, they do report back to the state improved gallons. So I was suggesting that maybe we could go with the twenty-five thousand proof gallons. Um, but that's obviously open for further discussion. You know, the state has allowed up to a hundred thousand. Willoughby, what, fifty? We were at eight. So. Just you know, they're asking for twenty-five, I mean, I.
I think we should coincide with state, whatever state, whatever the state regulations are. What, I think that's what we should, that's what we should try to target, would be whatever state, whatever the state regs are. Instead of running, instead of trying to restrict beyond that, whatever the, you know.
Does the state have a minimum or a, a max?
Yeah.
Yes.
And it's fifty thousand?
One hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand?
Yeah.
You have to start drinking now.
I mean.
Yeah.
And a lot.
This particular user had indicated that once, you know, at that, at that twenty-five thousand gallon, you know, they able to compete regionally and then if they were successful at that point, they felt that they can, you know, have their own standalone production facility elsewhere.
Right. What about the inclusion of brew pub? I mean, do we want, you know, because we don't, right now, we don't have brew pub in our,
Right.
in our definition, you know, or in our designations. Do we want to, uh, do we want to change that and add brew pub? And so have the micro distillery, the micro brewery, the micro winery, and then maybe brew pub included in that, too, because that's where a little more, and if you look at some of the definitions by somebody, it's a little more restricted. It's got a little more that, a little more, the facility has to be dedicated to, uh, table service and, and counter space versus production. So maybe that, maybe we want to include brew pub, or do you want to just keep it with the micro brewery, micro distillery and micro winery?
Well, we have the the twenty percent limit for restaurant usage and similar and tasting.
Where a brew pub's like fifty percent.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but you still give them the option to be able to do on, on-prem.
Yeah.
But they're going to be probably small batch or, you know, small batch or smaller scale if they have to devote fifty percent of their facility to
A restaurant.
A restaurant, counter service, retail space, you know, type of thing.
I think the way, um, I've seen some of the other communities define brew pub, that would probably fall under our definition of micro brewery.
That's what I'm saying. Does it conflate the two? I don't want to, you don't want to conflate the two.
Or could you put micro brewery slash brew pub? That way it clears it up if anybody inquired. I mean.
Well, if someone were to approach the township and say, I want to do a brew pub, I'd say, what, what do you mean brew pub? You know, and, and find out, you know, and does that fit within our definition of, of micro brewery or, you know, do, do we need to regulate it as?
I'm sorry, Heather, isn't that what is said in thirteen three five? A, micro brewery shall include a restaurant, bar and our
Right.
tasting room?
Right.
So isn't that what you're asking? And I'm a little confused. Brew pub versus this says a micro brewery shall include a restaurant.
There are some communities that define it even outside of a micro brewery. They say that, um, for example, Willoughby, they say brew pub, you have to have, you have to sell at least twenty-five percent of your product within that pub. So you couldn't like distribute for sale outside of that. So they're, the way that, um, some of the communities are saying you have to sell it on-site. Not, not devote a certain amount of space towards it, but you can, if you're going to produce a hundred thousand bottles a year, twenty-five thousand of those have to be sold on-site. Versus shipped out to Johnny People or wherever someone else is going to sell them.
Yeah, some of the lines between brew pub and micro brewery are kind of blurred.
Right.
Actually, I think your edits cover just about everything, Heather.
I think so.
I would have no problem with the edits she has in here.
Right.
The one item you missed on thirteen three five on the title. We still have urban winery.
No, she's got it crossed out right below it.
Yeah, right below it, but not in the title.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we would do that if this got to amendment phase. Thank you, Heather.
I'm sure you go in and search for urban and change it to micro all places.
How do you do that? Is that part of Word?
Yeah.
You can do on track. Well, oh, I don't know. I thought you were serious.
Never had to do that before. I'm technically an apt. Yeah, I don't know. Maybe, yeah, maybe you're right. Maybe, maybe if we cover, maybe we don't need to include brew pub. You know, I think micro, the, micro brewery is, I think it hits, it's, it covers the bases. I just saw, I just noticed that a lot of the other examples you gave, Willoughby has a brew pub definition. Madison has a brew pub definition. Hamilton, Jackson Township has a brew pub. Beaver Creek has a brew pub. Hamilton has a brew pub. They all have a brew pub. But I'm, but when you read the definitions, there's not a whole hell of a lot of difference between the two. I mean, it seems to be pretty similar. So.
And some of them aren't very well defined either.
Right.
So.
See, I'd like, you know, like Miami's, they say that alcoholic beverages, you can't include, you can't include alcoholic beverages that aren't made on-site, which is kind of interesting.
Yeah.
So you can, you can, you can have, you can sell what you make, but you can't bring
Anything else.
You can't bring anything. So you couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't sell beer and then have Miller Lite. Or Bud Light on, you know, you couldn't, you couldn't, by that definition, you can't. Or you couldn't serve alcohol, you know, you couldn't serve booze. You wouldn't be able to have any alcohol, be beer on, and it's only beer that you're brewing on-site. That's kind of an interesting caveat. Kind of a interesting idea. And I think, yeah, it looks like Beaver Creek, same thing. Only brewed on premises. So. Yeah, it's kind of interesting.
Uh, but getting back to your first thought, Andy, about the one hundred thousand gallons on the micro distillery, Heather, is there a reason that, any reason why a Willoughby is fifty thousand? Is that maybe before the law changed? Um, what?
Yeah, you know, I don't know. I could, I could.
Yeah, I think the law, that law just recently changed, right, Heather? Within the last, you know, within the last year or less?
I think it was maybe in, it was after two thousand fifteen, but I think it was around two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. I'd have to go back and see. And, you know, I can reach out to Willoughby's, um, team and, and, you know, kind of get an understanding of where they came at with the fifty thousand.
Yeah, so you get the Willoughby Brewing Company. You would think they'd
Yeah.
put out quite a volume.
Right.
When you compare the gallonage of a micro brewery at fifteen thousand barrels, which I did the math here, that's close to a half a million gallons. Whereas a micro distillery, if it was a hundred thousand, so it's about one-fifth or twenty percent of a micro brewery. But I, just kind of curious, I would agree with Andy. We'd have a basis of saying a hundred thousand because it's state law. The others are, again, it was the word arbitrary.
Yeah.
Right.
Unless Willoughby, unless there's some variable here that we, tangible, we don't know.
Yeah.
More than likely that was the law back then.
Well, I can find out for you and let you know.
What I told Heather earlier was, if you look at the beer, fifteen thousand barrels is just about a half a million gallons. Add five percent alcohol, which is a typical, typical beer, twenty-three thousand, six hundred, twenty-five gallons of alcohol per beer. Okay? If you look at the spirit, the micro distillery, and you look at, oh, forty-five percent alcohol, that's not too bad. Twenty-five thousand gallons. And that comes out to be eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty gallons of alcohol, about half of what the beer is.
I think five percent is being conservative.
Well, okay, then go up a little bit. So you're less than half.
Right. And I'm just saying, I think five percent.
Seven, seven percent?
I would probably say on a minimum, I would think it would probably be close. You know, typical micro breweries are in, uh, eight to twelve or fourteen ABV.
Okay.
So.
Well, so, but I just took five percent.
Right, no, I understand. And I, I think that's a fair enough idea.
If you go above that, you're going to get more gallons of alcohol. And in wine, we're looking at, uh, if you look at eleven to thirteen percent of alcohol, I took twelve. You're coming out with twenty-eight, a hundred and fifty-one gallons of alcohol. So wine is really down. Beer is really up per, per year, per twelve-month period. That's what we're talking about. And, uh, spirits, yeah, we could go to fifty thousand. We could go to a hundred thousand. That'd be four times that. Whoa. Well, hey. Like Andy said, let's start drinking now if you're going to go that high. So.
I think, and, and I think if you go, and I think what we don't have a handle on is, you know, if you're going to have a hundred thousand gallons of proof gallons per year, what does that operation really look like? Like, how big is that building?
It's going to be huge.
Are you talking like a thirty thousand square foot, you know, and we, I think we need to be sensitive to that because just remember that these are conditionally permitted uses in an area that we have designated as potentially a town center,
Yeah.
um, in our kind of neighborhood-ish type districts, um, also our, well, and our, our BX is not quite a neighborhood district, but it might fit a better, that scale over there, but I, I guess I would be a little cautious on going up. But I guess I would be a little cautious on going up to a hundred thousand within, maybe, maybe we want to look at in different districts then. So maybe not in the capital district. You couldn't do up to a hundred thousand if you want to limit it because we want to make sure that, that it's going to fit in with the character of the development that you're trying to create there.
It's a lot of production.
Yeah, and then you got to think about, okay, so, and then they still, keep in mind, still, they have to have at least twenty percent of the floor area devoted to this this retail or restaurant.
What would be the, what would be the difficulty in finding out the production capacity of existing micro breweries, distilleries, et cetera, that are known? See what they produce and then you can kind of scale that. You could say, well, these guys are doing fifty thousand gallons and that's a, it's a pretty big operation versus, you know, these guys are only doing twenty-five thousand gallons. It's really, it's a relatively small opera, you know? Would it, how difficult would it be like to pick out a couple of breweries within the, within the area, micro breweries and micro distilleries and get an idea what their production is? And then you can kind of vision, then you can see, well, that, been to that facility, I know how big it is, I know what they're doing, and yeah, a hundred thousand, there's no, I mean, you're not doing a hundred, they're not going to do a hundred thousand. They could, they could have the ability to go that, scale up to that, but there's no way they're going to be able to do that. You know, it's not going to be, they're not going to be capable of doing that kind of production without a much bigger, more substantial operation, which isn't going to fit into where we're trying to, you know, trying to encourage that kind of a business.
Well, Heather, did this particular business owner indicate the size of the facility to produce twenty-five thousand gallons?
Um, they were in the, it was under ten thousand square feet. I mean, it was, it was, if I recall, it was near around five to seven thousand square feet.
With a restaurant type thing?
With their tasting room.
Okay. Isn't Willoughby more of a suburb city versus a township?
Yeah.
So, so they're more industrialized at fifty thousand gallons. I think if we have twenty-five or fifty, but I can see where Willoughby has fifty and we have twenty-five.
Why don't I come back with more information? I'll find out, you know, where Willoughby came up with their fifty thousand, if I can reach out to their administration. I'll try to figure out the best way to get information on some of the existing, I think it'll be easy to find stuff on breweries, but we're really talking about changing brewery capacity. We're really focused on distilleries, right?
I know of a distillery up in Perry.
That's right. Yep.
And it was my old boss at the plant. So I'll, I'll touch base with him.
Okay, yeah, if you can get information.
And see how much, I mean, how many square feet he's got. He doesn't have much. He's got a little tiny tasting room out front and it's more like a garage, a big garage.
And I wonder if, you know, if these are public records with the state as far as these existing distilleries in Ohio, I'm wondering if I can request some information, you know, from, I don't know, the Ohio Division of Liquor Control and if you have alcohol, tobacco and firearms on some of these existing.
Yeah, I'd be interested to know like square footage of the facility, production.
Right. And I'd have to go, then I have to find out what community and then contact the, you know, the community more than likely and find out what they know about what areas are used for what, for each of these operations. I can, I can do that so we can make a better informed decision on, you know.
Yeah, I think everything else is right, just plug in the number, whatever the appropriate number is.
Yeah, yeah. I think you did a good job in changing the definitions and adding them on the backside.
I agree. All right, girl. Frank, you still there?
Oh, yes.
What do you think? Do you have any comments on the, on the brewery capacities and things of that nature?
Well, I would think I would like to find out if the state has any criteria on that on gallons, for example, and what constitutes a micro brewery or a brewery or a distillery, for example. And then I would like to see, get a, get a regulation that they can only serve what they make. They can't be serving other types of variety of liquor, in my opinion. That's the theory I have, I'm concerned about.
I like that idea, but I don't know what the distillery would say, the distiller would say. I know the one up in Perry only sells his stuff.
I'm trying to think.
That's the thing, if you're not a staff of a micro brewery, you can only serve what you make, that's it, all right? You have your own stash of, or the rest I can eat and enjoy your beer, you know, if you want to have a little shot with trinkets and stuff yourself, that's fine. But that's, that's what I'd like to see, um, hard liquor, uh, all kinds of hard liquor, no, no, that's, but you get the hard liquor, they generally get to real high degree of state regulations, which you have to remedy straight time and monitor very closely, very closely. So I would like him over that way. That's my opinion, gentlemen.
I like the point of selling only what you make in the brew, in the micro brewery, the micro winery and also the micro distillery. I like that. I like that idea. Rich, comments?
There's a distillery, there's a distillery in Breakthorne Road in Leroy, Seven Brothers, but it doesn't show the capacity. Seven Brothers Distillery, they've got a website. We could check that one. Aren't they, aren't they the ones that are considering coming to Concord? Seven Brothers, or no?
Um, I have talked to them. I, I have had some discussion.
I'm trying to think of, what's it, what's the one in, what's the one out by South River Winery? Was it Red Eagle?
Red Eagle.
Yeah, Red Eagle?
Yes.
I'm not going to ask why you knew that so quickly. I'm just going to pretend that just that name just rolled into your head like that, but.
Oh, you know the owner, okay.
Red Eagle. Now, now, Red Eagle, if I'm not mistaken, I think they, they don't, they're not limited to what they, they don't just sell what they, the still there, correct? They just.
We can look into those things. By, by limiting it to what they're only producing there would be a significant change in how we have it set up right now. Because right now, you know, they've got the option of having a whole restaurant associated with either the micro brewery, the micro distillery. I think if you get into that, you're obviously going to want, that restaurant's going to want to sell other things other than just what's produced. So just keep that in mind.
Now, does that, now, does that require a liquor license if they're a distillery brew pub or, I mean?
Oh, yeah, there are, any of these things that we're talking about are going to require a liquor license in the state of Ohio, which, yeah.
So if they have a liquor license, then we would be curtailing their ability to sell other spirits.
Right.
I'd be interested to know too what the break, if, if we could, I would think that would be public consumption from a, what they're, if they're, if they're prohibited or if they're limited as to what they can sell versus what they make, you know? I'm kind of ambivalent about that one. I don't know that, I don't know that I agree with it. I don't know that I disagree with it. I guess I'd want, I'd want to know more, you know, I'd want to know more as to what the limitations would be and what that would mean to business. Because if somebody, you know, let's say, for instance, you don't drink, you know, somebody's, it's a micro distillery and they don't, you're a Scotch drinker and they don't have, you go there, you want to have a drink and they don't have Scotch because they don't make Scotch. So you got to go somewhere else, right? So, or, or any, I mean, you know, just you name it. I don't know, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to limit? Do we want to, do we want to have regulations that would limit somebody's ability to have commerce? I don't know. We could, I mean, we can, you know, we can do whatever we want. I mean, is that, is that smart? You know, is that the right approach?
For example, Andy, the, I think the one, uh, the firm's talking about Doc Howard's in Perry.
Yeah.
They are advertising thirteen premium spirits, nine whiskeys and two rums. So they do a variety. Don't talk about their capacity though.
What was the name of that again?
Doc Howard.
Yeah, Doc Howard. They do tours.
Yeah.
And tasting.
Yeah.
I met him once at a chamber event. Nice guy, very nice guy.
I remember one time I stopped in Dayton at a micro brewery and this place made thirteen different varieties of beer depending on the season. They had a Christmas type of beer, they had a summer kind of lager and just if that they had customers, they were just there just because they, they had a ton of variety. They didn't have to serve hard liquor because everybody just liked the beer too. And you could go in there and you could buy a shambler. They were right there in shop line. I'll tell you, I tried to search in the next year, because you were pretty good, you don't need to.
And those are the ones that sit next to ten and twelve percent A B Bs.
So I guess I would echo reservations about this, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure I understand the restriction. What, why, what would be the basis of restricting the ability? Is there, is it competition? Is it? I'm not sure, like Andy said, it's smart. If I knew, if I understood what would the rationale, what is the basis of restricting them from not selling anything else? I don't, I don't.
You have a liquor license. I mean, I would think you should be able to sell liquor.
But I, I think if you go to a micro brewery or a micro distillery, you're going to go there to sample what they make. I'm not going to go there to buy a Miller Lite. I'm going to go there to sample one of their specials up on the board.
But that's your decision.
That's, yeah, and if they have Miller Lite up there, oh, okay, I don't have Miller Lite. I don't like Miller Lite anyway, but.
Let me take that a step further, just as a matter of conversation. If you, if you go to a micro brewery and you want to sample a couple of their beers, if they're heavier beers, heavier meaning heavier and alcohol, heavier and just overall, you know, production and consumption, maybe you would want to drink one or two of their beers and then maybe you want to switch to something lighter and just, you know, and then enjoy the rest of the evening and have a couple of their beers first and get a taste of what, and then maybe switch to a Mick Ultra or a Miller Lite or a Bud Light after that because, you know, otherwise it's going to be time to go home.
Yeah.
You know, you might want to sit there and have a, and maybe they don't have anything to, maybe they don't have a beer that, a lighter beer. So if they just solve real heavy beers, I mean, you can only drink so many of those before you're like, either you just don't have the capacity to drink anymore of them or, you know, you're pretty much need a designated driver. So, but that's just a thought. I mean, I'm, you know, like.
Let's do some more research, some more numbers and see what.
Yeah, I'd, I would be interested to see how, what the restrictions or what other communities, if there are restrictions like that, if it's, you know, and maybe check with some of the other, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of micro breweries in the area and distilleries in the area. I mean, we could do a little bit of research and find out if they're limited only to selling their, or maybe you give them that, maybe you give them that, you give them the option. You say you can either just sell what you make or you can, you know, you can, you can do either or. I don't know. Give them an option. I don't know. I'd want to know more before I would want to take a hard position on that one or the other.
Well, I mean, I know, like, I've been to downtown Willoughby, the Willoughby Brewing Company. I know they sell their, their product and just typical domestic stuff and whatever.
Do they sell all the other typical beers?
Yeah, they do, like the.
They do?
Yeah, so you can go there and just get a regular beer. I've done that.
I don't think I drank, drank a regular beer at Willoughby Brewery. Okay, whatever. Okay, and I will go up to Doc Howard's.
While you're doing your research, she can do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we might have to go visit a few.
I think, I think that calls for, I think we need to have a field trip.
I do, yeah. Friday afternoon.
Yep, I think we should have a field trip.
Are we good on the two text amendments, two work sessions we had? Okay. Number two on the agenda for new business is approve the minutes of February second, two thousand twenty-one. You got those by way of email. Did anybody have any comments, corrections?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the February second, two thousand twenty-one meeting as written.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Correspondents report. Frank, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, I can't hear you.
Okay. Frank? Oh, yeah, Frank. Rich?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Rich?
Nothing for me as well, Mr. Chairman.
Andy?
Nothing.
I had one.
Ooh, please tell us.
No, it's nothing big. One of my friends from where I worked previously contacted me with respect to what was Cannerwood? Is that what it was? Off of.
The proposed Cannerwood Villas.
Yeah, the proposed one. They liked it and they were looking forward to seeing more of it. So I said, I'll let you know. Time will tell. Don't hold your breath, right? So that was all I had. Okay? Audience participant, do we have anybody else on the phone?
There's another caller. I don't know anyone I participate with.
No other callers?
There is another caller. If they're on the phone and want to participate, say something now.
Who's ever on the phone, if you'd like to participate, you may speak up now. Hearing nothing. Next meeting, Heather, zoning commission, April sixth, two thousand twenty-one.
Sounds good.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Frank? Okay. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.